Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rope.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ram Cassoon.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Oram is present.
Correspondents.
We have a thank you card from the Middletown City School District Odyssey of the Mine Group for presenting them with the keys to the city.
Received and filed.
We have a notice from the Town of Walk Hill Zoning Board of Appeals notifying us of a public hearing for a property at 169 Watkins Avenue. They're looking to change a property line.
Received and filed.
And a standard notice of form for providing third day notice to a municipality for a restaurant, Letazza Cafe Vino LLC at 22 Montgomery Street.
Received and filed. And for the good of the city, we'd like to welcome the school district up for their presentation.
Thank you, President Rodriguez, Mayor DiStefano, and the council. It is really exciting to be here again tonight. You afforded us the distinct opportunity to come and present to you when we were putting up our capital project in the winter. And we were discussing, and we think that this could be the first time that we have been invited to a meeting to review the budget, you know, for the good of the city in this way. So we feel really honored to be here tonight and excited to show you what we think is an incredible budget that benefits the entire school ecosystem. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Mr. Michael Tuttle, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, to kick us off.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having us. So we're going to do a real quick snapshot of our budget in this year. If you've been listening to some of the fair funding campaign for fiscal equity, things going on with the state, we were actually beneficiaries of nice revenue from the state. So we're able to do some different things this year with capital improvements and Superintendent Creedon will go over that in a little bit. So our overall budget this year will be $228 million. That's an increase of eight, almost 9%, about 8.76%. If you look at our capital line, you'll see a significant increase there. And that's all related to the capital projects that we're going to review in a little bit. So ultimately, when we go into next year, we'll see a reduction. We won't have that much of a budget, depending on the state aid again, of course, and then we may have some more capital projects again next year. So this year, we're looking for the voter approval, $228,641,730. And then if we go through all of our budget lines, you'll see we have an administrative component. That's all the administrative clerical administrators. We have program, which is all our instruction curriculum, sports, field trips, drama clubs, anything that has to do with instruction. We have our capital component, which we talked about a little bit. And we also have benefits, which you can see $40 million in benefits is quite significant. And that's for every school district. Roughly about 75% of the benefits with salaries and benefits is 75% of our budget. So it's a significant chunk of change for us. But this year, we feel really confident where the number where we landed at $228 million. And we talk about our tax levy, and we talked a little bit about our extra revenue that we received this year, a little bit about the revenue. So we've been deficient every year for the past 15 years from the state government. And then just in the past three years alone, we're owed over a half, over $100 million. So when you total all up over 15, it's about $600 million that we were owed. And that would have been a significant impact on the community and the school system over those 15 years. Although we won't get all that money back in one shot, we will be made whole every year based on the numbers we should be receiving. So that's a very, it's very good for the school district and the community. This year, we're actually introducing a $5 million reduction in the tax levy. So if you understand the levy, that's what the taxpayers actually pay. They all chip in based on their parcels and their percentage. And although I say everything goes down $5 million, it depends on the equalization rate for each year. Your taxes may go up a little bit, they may go down a little bit. I'm sure everyone feels that when the tax times comes around, the tax bills goes out. So this year, we're looking at a tax levy of $72,404,150. So it's pretty significant decrease in the tax levy, and we're very excited about that. And I'll show you a little bit. Wait, hang on one second. So if you go up above a little bit, three years ago, we were at $76 million levy, and then we went up 1%. And then last year, we were at 0% increase. And then this year, we're going to see a significant decrease in the tax levy. So something to be very proud of for the community and keeping all our programs the same, keeping staff intact. And really, in the next slide, we'll go over the capital improvements.
Yeah. So one of the things just to know is that, you know, we began diving into this budget just about the end of September, beginning of October. So we've been working incredibly hard all fall and through the winter to make sure that we were prepared to continue to fuse together both the savings in terms of the return on the investment to our school community, as well as continue to catapult our programs and our facilities forward. And so what we did add in this budget is just over $15 million of capital improvements. And so these improvements, although, you know, big dollar values are not the big, huge projects like a total building renovation or, you know, a $50 million project, these are sort of those littler projects that sort of creep up on you. As we all know, school facility improvements to both, you know, the infrastructure, right? So that would be like the roofing and lighting upgrades and HVAC, those pieces, as well as just the facilities. Our school community is huge, 28,000, approximately 28,000 voters, about 7,400, 7,500, depending on the time of year for students, seven buildings. So we are, we're a large organization. And so in order for us to continue to bring value to our school community at large by maintaining our facilities and keeping our facilities in a place where others from outside of the community want to come in, and we generate revenue that way. So each time our stadium is used, it brings in revenue not only to the school district itself through the facilities use, but as well to the community and the local businesses. And all you have to do is drive through downtown Middletown or in any of the surrounding neighborhoods inside both the city limits and the town of Walk Hill to see the growth that is existing here. And so we know and feel confident that both the city and the school district are equal partners and share in that joy. And so these capital improvements continue to allow us to maintain our facilities. So what we wanted to do was instead of taking, you know, the approach where we put all of our eggs into one basket and really did significant improvements at one facility, we wanted to make sure that our community felt like their dollar was being valued, that their voice was being heard by us doing a little bit of improvement in each of the locations. So we touch all of the corners of the school community. Twin Towers, obviously, was the referendum that we came and presented to you in the winter, right? So that's the big piece that gets touched. But then after that, we're going to be doing some roofing repairs and upgrades at the high school and William Carter Elementary School. We're going to do athletic field upgrades and lighting upgrades. And so that makes our facility accessible by wheelchair. So the upper part, we're adding an elevator that makes the events press box accessible by elevator, as well as lighting upgrades. So we have had some complaints or wonders over years about how bright the lights are and the directions that they shine. And so we're upgrading those to more modern lights that are sensitive to the environment and the ecosystem that they exist in. We're doing performance-based improvements. So we don't want to just touch athletics and roofing and actual buildings in terms of the brick and mortar, but we want to touch the spaces where our fine arts experience our buildings. So we will be doing upgrades to our fine arts spaces and sound improvements to auditoriums and theaters and improving those. We'll also be doing flooring replacements at William Carter Elementary School and Monhegan Middle School. Presidential Park will receive some infrastructure upgrades as well as a canopy so that in the less than desirable weather, those scholars and educators and administrators are covered by a structure. And then at Maple Hill Elementary School, we will be doing some infrastructure upgrades as well as a walk-run path and in increasing the size of their playground. So kind of hitting each of the buildings with a little project.
Good. Thank you. So that's all with a $5 million tax levy reduction. So a very exciting year for us as far as revenue and programming is concerned. Because a year and a half ago with COVID, we were looking at a 20% cut in state aid, which would have been devastating to the school community. That's a lot of staffing, a lot of programming. So very fortunate at this time. So let's go over some of the things if the budget were to fail and we had to go to contingent vote. So if we were to, the budget were to be defeated, and we said we're going to go to a contingent vote, that means we would have to go back to last year's levy. That means there's no $5 million reduction in the tax levy. So, and those are all by the state laws, and those are the regulations that we have to go with. So that's kind of really important for us as we're going through the voting process. For the budget to pass, because we're not over the 2% cap, because we actually reduced the levy, the 2% cap is to make sure you're not going too much higher than the actual levy each year. We need 50 plus one positive votes for the vote to pass. So and then as we went to contingent, as I said, the levy would be the same, and then no additional budget request would be honored. And there's no equipment purchases except for health and safety, and we would have to charge for facilities use. That's where each night during the fall, winter, and spring, the gyms are full capacity with sports and local programming going on. So all that changes where we would have to actually charge the teams and whatever events are going on. Go ahead.
Yeah. Just a reminder that the Middletown Board of Education has adopted the budget. So the next step is for us to do a budget hearing, which will be on May 5. And then the budget vote on Super Tuesday of May 17. But just before the actual vote gets cast, we have one additional opportunity. We provided lots of opportunity from voice for our valued school community. And so our last opportunity to sort of unpack the budget and help folks understand the line items and all of the detailed intricate parts of a school budget is a coffee and conversation from 6:00 to 7:30 on May 12, which will hold in the high school in the media center. And it'll be an opportunity for us to ask, I'm sorry, answer any of the questions that you ask. And this is your opportunity to make sure that you come to the polls on May 17 confidently casting your ballot, you know, informed. And so the last thing we want to just show is that we do have an active email address that we have been utilizing all winter, which is budget@ecsdm.org. So if you have a question, go ahead and email us. That email comes to Mr. Tuttle and myself, and we will promptly respond to your questions so that you get every piece of information that you need to come to the polls on May 17. And again, I just want to thank President Rodriguez, the council, and the mayor for allowing us to come here tonight and giving us yet another channel to, you know, share information with our school communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice presentation.
You're not going to introduce me?
You're getting up.
All right.
The mayor yet.
All right. Well, I want to thank Superintendent Creedon and Mr. Tuttle for the presentation. You know, I've always taken a position, even when I was on the outs with this former, one of the former superintendents, that it's very dangerous, I think, for a community to vote down a school budget, especially a budget that's reasonably presented with accurate information. Because a budget always, a no budget, a no vote on the budget always hurts a community. And so it's, I guess at times maybe it may be appropriate when, if you think, you know, the district is not doing the right thing financially. But as you can see over the past couple of years, a 0 and a 1%. And now this year, we're talking about either a $5 million cut in tax levy or leaving the levy the way it is. I think it's just an easy call. So the, I'm hoping that the residents of the city of Middletown and Middletown School District will support the budget. It's not only financially responsible, but it's so beneficial now that we have that little bit of extra capital to address these capital projects. And the superintendent is correct about the impact on the community, the economic development of the community too, with the sports stadiums and the activity that's going there. But more important, they have a busload of kids going out that we just honored and received a thank you to Iowa in a couple of weeks. Those programs would be cut, you know, all the activities that kids really need, especially in a urban setting. The, we need to keep people busy and keep kids busy. And passing that budget does keep it busy. And we do a lot of programming in those schools with the after-school programming and programming in the summer. So I can't emphasize enough, and when's the last time you heard you're going to have a 6.49% tax decrease?
I wish we had.
Tax levy decrease.
I wish we had it last year when we weren't campaigning.
Yeah, yeah.
But you didn't have anybody running against you, so you were all right. I still have to hear it.
Yeah. No, but it's good news. It's good news for the city. It's good news for the town. I'm sure Supervisor Serrano joins me with, in supporting, supporting the budget and also supporting the communication and the outreach to the community. So it's important to get out and vote. One is, I thought I heard her say 28,000 voters, and not a lot of those 28,000 vote. So get out and vote and show your support. And it's, it's in our own best interest as homeowners that we support these budgets. Because not only are we getting the benefit of the tax levy decrease, but the benefits of having a strong school district. We're seeing it over the last few years with the, you know, we have homes in certain parts of the city that we thought would never, ever reach maybe even $100, $125,000 of value that are selling for over a quarter of a million dollars now. So there's value in a strong school district to us as a city and as city residents, and not only to the students, that's the obvious stuff, but there's also value for economic development. There's also value for us as homeowners and property owners in the community. So thank you Superintendent Creedon and Mr. Tuttle for the presentation, and I'm sure it was well received at home. The, I also want to thank so many people who were involved in the cleanup event. Again, this was organized by Sue DePue, who's in the back here. And I'm sure Sue will probably, maybe, did we miss you, Sue? You didn't come up and speak. Oh, you're going to come up after me then and speak. And the, the event was, I think, nearly 500 people showed up, overwhelming majority of kids, young people, some neighbors. And that was about 500. We had sign up physically at the park or on the, on the sign up that, what's it called, Rick?
Sign up genius.
Sign up genius, by our clerk genius. I didn't even know it existed. But the, the point being that we did clean up a lot. Parks and Rec was very busy that day and that weekend picking up the bags that were collected. But more importantly, it's another event coming, people coming together to do good things for our city. So I want to thank everyone that was involved, from Sue and Rick, I know you were very much involved in it, and all the people who were involved in making it work, Maria Bruni, I know, and some of her staff, Joey, Joey Ferrara. And it's just a tremendous turnout, probably the biggest turnout that we had. So we have a big tax levy decrease in the school district. All the kids come, clean up the city. What better things, what better month did we have, right? Pretty good April. The other thing we had, pretty good April, was we're doing some ribbon cuttings. And we're going to continue to do ribbon cuttings. We did another one today in the downtown area. Here is Well-Worn Books on 130 and a Half Wycombe Avenue. And the other we did was at 12 Washington Street, a florist. You know, for many years, we talked about florists downtown. Everyone said, why can't you get a florist downtown? Well, this is the second ribbon cutting we're doing like in a few months for a florist downtown. Hopefully, people in the community will patronize these new businesses and help them survive the, you know, the post-COVID reality of being in business. But I want to congratulate them for, for taking the chance, because it takes a lot to go into business, especially this day and age. With all the big, you know, you can walk into a Walmart or a ShopRite and buy old flowers that are wilting away in a day. Or you can come here and buy some nice flowers, and they'll last several days for you. And if they don't, don't call me. We also had two others. Bike Way Bicycles was today, and Luscious Lashes at 97 Wycombe Avenue. Bike Way Bicycles, obviously located here because of the trail. This is their fifth shop that they've opened. It's absolutely, absolutely beautiful. The brick walls, the ceilings have been restored. Doug, the owner, one of the owners was there today with us as we cut the ribbon. We're going to be talking to Doug about partnering with us on the ice rink so we can do some skate rental there too for the wintertime. So we can have accessibility for people who want to do some skating. So again, forming another partnership with local business. We also had a busy week, busy yesterday, was Congressman Maloney, who's been very responsive to our needs. As you know, a few weeks ago, we did the check award for $3.5 million for Phase 2 of the infrastructure project. That is for the water, the water line, the water main coming down Monhegan Avenue. I think this is maybe Phase 1 of this line. But it's $3.5 million for water mains. That's a significant amount of money. The congressman was, was here awarding us that check. And then we got a call the other day from him talking about a grant submission by our police chief, Chief Huantu. And with the congressman came yesterday, we did a little panel discussion, excuse me, along with the Town of Deer Park Chief, Chief Stedner, and also the Town of Fish Gill Supervisor, Ozzy Alba. And Chief Huantu joined us also. And we had a panel discussion about, about crime, about criminal issues, or how crime impacts our communities, and what can he do in Congress to, to help us in our efforts. I did point out to the congressman that the city of Middletown is at our 1990 levels for crime. And that's because we've made investments, not just investments in hiring police, but we've made investments in the chief is committed to, and also the previous chief also, Bethencourt, committed to that outreach in the community. And part of that outreach is with the school district, where we've been partnering with them on, on different items. But equally important is that they're doing, they're coming down to the community and saying, how can we help you? And the congressman was nice enough to submit a application for us for funding for plate readers and additional cameras to expand our camera system. The plate readers were primarily stationary cameras. Some, but I guess the chief, if you're interested, will talk about it to you in committee. And but also the plate, the plate reader program is important. It's a, it's a good tool. Technology is probably the biggest thing we can do now in, in law enforcement. It's not only bodies, it's technology. And the $300,000 that we'll be receiving under this grant program will be very helpful in moving that program along. So I want to thank the congressman for his visit. And we also had some good news from him also on an additional infrastructure project that he is submitting. And I got the email confirmation today that he's submitting, I believe, for another $4 million for additional water main. And that'll go to a reconciliation between the Senate and the House. And hopefully, that level will be maintained. So this is all part of the Biden infrastructure plan that, that receives no Republican votes. But it's all coming home to roost now for us is that, and communities like us, because without this money, we would not be doing this as rapidly as we are. And we're going back a couple of years when we had a consolidated funding application approval through New York State, which was about $4 million, $3.5 million, the same. 20% was, of that project was also state funding. There are also state grants out that are coming out for infrastructure so that these are pass-through monies also. So we're doing pretty good as a city with the infrastructure bill that was proposed by President Biden. That's why I was a delegate. We also had, two hours later, the Secretary of State, much skinnier guy than me, and you, Andrew. He smiled when I said that. But a very nice man. He's new to, new to the position. The former Secretary of State, Rosanna Rosado, has been, I guess, promoted to Commissioner of Department of Criminal Justice statewide. So she's the head of that division. So the Secretary of State came down to do a budget presentation to us, to a roomful here at City Hall. We did take him on a tour of our DRI. As, if you recall, that the DRI monies were all funneled through the Secretary of State. And other economic development programs come through that office. So he said he's able to give out monies and increments, well, we have to win monies, in increments of $2 million, $5 million, and $10 million. So we've already won the $10 million. So we're looking now at the $2 million and $5 million projects that will be helpful to us here in the city. So Commissioner Rodriguez and a crew, Maria Bruni, his staff, we hosted him for lunch and on a tour through downtown. They were able to see firsthand the, the impact that the DRI had. The $10 million investment by the state, we were the first community in the Hudson and New York State to receive that money. That project is winding down now with the final phase of the sidewalk project. And everything we said we would do, we did. And I think that's going to be helpful to us in our new applications. So it's kudos to all the staff who made it work, the Economic Development Office, Jacob Twill, his staff. And we, I think the commissioner was impressed enough that he said he wants to come back and have another barbecue at Equilibrium. So, and so I wanted to open up to any questions you may have, and appreciate the time.
Any question for the mayor? No questions.
I defer to Mr. Johnson.
Let it go, mayor, let it go.
And now for the good of the city, we'll continue. If anyone would like to come up and address the council.
Good evening. Susan DePue, 57 Prospect Street. I would, I would call myself what the mayor calls me, the litter lady. So today, I'm just going to summarize what Middletown became in one day. We had 500 or more students and people handling garbage, litter, things that should never be on the ground. And they lovingly picked it up, shoved it in bags, and left it for somebody to pick up. They then went on to the next street and continued this path. It's amazing to see these kids and the people who live in this city take such pride in making Middletown better. For 10 years, I've stood here, and I am so proud that we are at this point, that we have 500. We started with maybe 20 in 2011. We had 130 bags of garbage, 500 children and adults cleaning up Middletown. Thanks to everyone who participated. The Middletown School District was amazing. The students from many sports participated early in the morning, gathered bags, and got on the bus and went to many sites in Middletown. So I'd like to thank Middletown for becoming all the things that I envisioned 10 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right. Apartment heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. The mayor kind of touched upon the ice skating rink. We did have a bid opening for the ice skating rink at Area Way Park under the pavilion. The board of estimate referred to myself and John Bianchi to review. So we did get two bids, and we hope to have one of them before you at the next council meeting so we can move forward with the project. Tonight during the CDA meeting, we discussed three properties. One is going to contract, and there's two pretty much underway for construction. And we're going to have three new homeowners in our community that will be moving into these properties. So that program is moving pretty swiftly. I don't want to jinx it, but it's moving pretty swiftly as we speak. On the community development block grant funds, our housing rehab is also going strong. We have some rehabs out right now. And we have some economic development in the, We have some rehabs out right now, and we have some economic development in the, in forms of a small business loan coming to the department. So those activities are moving well as well. Paramount Theater, we did have a really cool concert last week, the Fleetwood Mac Tribute. It was an awesome concert, and we're moving forward now with Taylor Dane coming to the theater in a couple of weeks. And Dr. Strange will be the new release that will be coming for movies there. Also with the bid, you know, we partner up on the summer concerts and everything. We're going to be starting June 2nd at the Run for Downtown Park, the Thursday night concerts. And then June 3rd, the Friday night concerts at John Degnan Square. And the farm market will be, will begin on June 4th, Saturday, June 4th, at Area Way Park under the pavilion. And you're going to see the release of the concerts this week on our Facebook and website. And I think that's it for this evening, unless you have any questions.
Alden McClaner?
Thank you. We have a resolution for repairs for the Paramount. Could you just explain what that is?
Correct. There's the roofing system over the lobby and box office that needs repair. It's leaking. We're having several leaks in the box office and the main lobby that's affecting the ceiling. So that's what that is for.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. Alderman Massey is not here, but he is watching from California, I think. The reservoirs are full, Alderman Massey, so rest assured, we have plenty of water in the city. However, we did have an important meeting today with the DEC regarding our water-taking permits. And there are certain commitments that we have to comply with, which will require some expenditure, some of which we already, the mayor and I, the mayor, he authorized when we were meeting with DEC about a year ago to install flow meters. And all these things are coming due for, we have to install flow meters at all our reservoirs and at the outlet of the reservoirs and the bypass. So everything is tracked by DEC. And we have, October is, is the deadline that's coming, and we're trying to put all things together. We're going to be purchasing some flow meters on our own and installing them. The water, water department is going to do that. And other flow meters which really are involved, they're going to be incorporated in dams upgrades. We're going to be upgrading the Kinch Dam, and we're going to be upgrading the Shuangang Dam. And these are multimillion dollar projects. So I think, yeah, they are budgeted, and we have to add to them the cost of the flow meters. But the DEC is very much interested in that, and they want to make sure that we pin it down and we comply with our, with the requirement for the water-taking permits that we have and the safe yield of 4.2 million gallons. So another subject is the zombie poles or double poles and, and all that. So, so far, they've taken down about 30 of them.
Thank you.
After, after years and years and years of stagnation, now we have this $30 million project moving forward with the traffic operations. So they're moving ahead of us, removing any double poles. So once we pour the sidewalk and the concrete and the granite curb, you're not going to have double poles. You're just going to have the one pole that's supporting the wires, and the zombie pole or the broken pole, hopefully it will disappear. They promised they're, they're going to go through and finish the whole city for us. So that will be done tomorrow. They're going to start, Orange and Rockland, they're going to be starting to restore the sidewalk on West Main and Mon Hagan. This is the sidewalk, if you remember. That's what they ripped out in order to put the gas line under the sidewalk because our roads underground are congested. The safest place for them is to go under the sidewalk. So they ripped it out, they put asphalt in there. Now they're going to come and rip, rip out asphalt and put the concrete sidewalk. So it's going to, it's going to look nice once they are done. They're going to be stopping at about 250 feet from any signalized intersection because the signalized intersection is going to be done by our $30 million project. And when people hear, hear a $30 million project, most likely it's going to be, our responsibility is going to be only 5% of the $30 million. The rest of it is grants from federal government through the New York State DOT. So the traffic operations, we, it's moving along in full gear. And the water line project, we had some problems and issues, legal issues with the contractor. We sorted things out. We made a major payment for him. He's going to be starting again tomorrow. So hopefully that will be concluded very soon. Like the mayor was saying, the congressman is looking to give us another $4 million. Like the mayor stated, he already gave us $3.5 million a week ago. Now he's going to put us in the next fiscal 2023 year with additional $4 million to carry the project on from wherever we stop now to go further into the city. And this way, we are replacing our raw water, our finished water lines that are over 100 years old, some of them, which will obviously provide reliability and security for our people, our, our residents, the people who use our water, and will continue to maintain the water quality, the excellent water quality that we have. Today, we had another, another deadline to resubmit vulnerability assessment, emergency response plan, and cybersecurity for our water system, which we did that, we submitted that to the Orange County. They will review it and then forward it to New York State Department of Health once they approve it. Again, very successful cleanup after, after the COVID being disappeared for a couple of years. Everybody came out, and we are very grateful, and I'm very grateful for everyone who helped. And also DPW came out Monday, and they picked up whatever bags were piled up. And also, they cleaned up the Heritage Trail, DPW did, from, from East Main, working towards the city line. We're almost done, and there are piles and piles of tires and garbage and junk and all that stuff. So we, we asked people, if you start, once the trail is open from East Main Street going towards city line, towards Dulcet Town Road, please just maintain it, be very careful, pick up after yourself, don't leave any garbage there or any litter. We would appreciate that very much. With that, I will conclude. Also, be careful with the grass, please. Council, President Rodriguez, he gets very, takes it personally when he sees grass very high. So please stay on top of it and cut the grass. We don't want to send you letters of violation or come and cut your grass for, for you and then send you a heavy bill. We, we don't need that. We need everybody's cooperation.
You know what I'm noticing is garbage is starting to grow.
Garbage started to grow?
Put out their garbage, the third ward put out their garbage. So I know we're sending letters, right?
We're actually, we're taking people to court, unfortunately. Some people did not respond, especially in the third ward because they're not, so they're, they're going to court. I met with the mayor and discussed it, and, and people are going to court because they did not comply. We did a friendly reminder. We gave him a letter. We followed up with violation and still nothing. So now they're going to go to court, unfortunately.
Beer's Drive, got a whole bunch of people. Third Ward is the last ward.
Yes, yes, we were very much.
Three weeks out.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And we got Mr. Steenrod in there. He's our, our toughest inspector. He's the one who's doing the third ward. And, and, you know, it's, it's sad. We don't want to do it, but it, it has to be done and, you know.
I'm okay. Alden McClaner?
Thank you. Commissioner, electronics drop-off day. I can't find on the website.
May 26th, it should be.
When is it?
May, no, May, May 20th. She's saying, older woman, yes, May 20th, Saturday, the drop-off on, on Mon Hagan Avenue at the DPW garage. You bring your electronic, there's maximum of five units and so on, but that's already set. The fourth ward, spring cleanup starts next week, next Monday, on the 9th, the 4th, and then the third will start on May the 16th. I'm sorry.
Okay. Are you going to do any milling program at all this year with everything else going on?
Yes, yes, we are. Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. The state has been very generous with us with the, with the CHIPS money. So we have quite a few dollars to spend on milling and paving as well. So we have, we have everything going on. We have a $4 million water line project and the milling and paving and $30 million project. So, yes.
Very good.
Yeah.
Asking you about Cantrell.
What's that?
Be asking you about Cantrell. That was, that was a big issue last year, so. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Police Chief?
Good evening. Just a few items this evening. First, last year, I reported several times to the council in regards to the police department covering security at the COVID vaccination center at OAK. We put in a lot of hours from the spring into the, the summer. We also coordinated with the city to help purchase and organize all the PPE for the city. Last week, we were notified by the state that we're getting that money back. It's just over $300,000. So it's, it's a significant amount. So between my staff and the staff from Finance Department, they're able to put all the documents together to have that money returned to us. So that's a great effort, and I thank them for that. On the police end, just recently, we started, or I started a traffic unit, put them out there to help combat some of the high-traffic areas and complaints that I receive from not only the members of the council, but from the, the public as, as a whole. So it's being very effective. Officer Xianja right now is assigned to that. He's being very effective, doing a great job. Also today, our new downtown officer started as a full-time assignment. We just transitioned him out of the school as an SRO. We replaced him in the school. And also Troya will be now in the downtown. He's also going to do some double duty and do some bike patrol on the Heritage Trail as he is a bike officer as well. Additionally, with some of the more active time of year, as the warm weather comes upon, so, so does some of the quality of life crime increases. So I put together a two-person plainclothes unit that you'll see out as well combating some of those hotspots that we have. These are in addition to our neighborhood enhancement units that are still out there as well. So you will see some additional activity, and if you have any concerns or anything that you would like addressed, please reach out to me so that I could properly focus people on those. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Just some updates on what we, our maintenance got going on. Reservoir trails, the garbage cans are starting to be placed out now. We are, they're currently fixing a lot of the paths from the, all the heavy rain with the washout. So they're replacing and filling a lot of the ditches from the rain. The Van Duser bathroom is almost finished, should be open by next month. So we're going to get those porter potties out as soon as we can, once those are open. Frank Shorter Walkway, about halfway complete. I know a lot of the residents are, or not even residents, the people who park and walk all through there, very excited that they don't actually have to go on a roadway anymore. Wool Slayer Field, John and his crew been working very hard over there cleaning the site and doing the final grading. The construction fence is going to go up around the track very soon. He's just making all the stops around Middletown to try to get enough of the fence to fully wrap around the track. In two weeks, they should be breaking ground on the concession stand building. That's also going to have bathrooms and storage attached to it also. They're starting to clean off the pool deck to prepare for the summer. Tennis programs, we've been getting a few complaint phone calls. Tennis program has been revamped. In the past, they paid, especially the adults, one price, and that was for spring, summer, and fall. And they would get countless sessions with Jim Holden. This year, we are revamping it. So the spring is one price. There's going to be a summer session one, summer session two, fall session one, and fall session two. So we've been fielding a lot of complaint phone calls with the tennis. You're still getting the high-quality lessons that you're paying for. It's just at a reasonable rate coming from our end now instead of one price for spring, summer, and fall. And just a reminder, the go, go out and vote and support the budget. Like they were explaining, if it does go to the contingent budget, it does affect the Recreation Department. We are very lucky and grateful for the relationship that we have with the school district, and we're able to use their facilities. Like this summer, we will be in one of the school buildings. Not sure which one yet. They have a lot of great programs going on, so they're trying to house all their stuff, and then we're going to find out where we're going to be. So please, 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 please support their budget and go out and vote because they are very good to us when it comes to summer. Any questions?
Questions? Alden McClaner?
Thank you. The, one complaint I heard with the tennis is when the courts got locked up at 3 o'clock. Are they still closed at 3?
That's always been happening. They don't get opened every day until at least Memorial Day weekend. And that's when school's out and we put on a park patrol, someone whose security is going, that's going to lock up everything. So right now, during the week, it's just when our maintenance opens in the morning and they close it before they leave. And on weekends, it is open from dusk till dawn. Park Patrol's around on the weekends right now, Monday through Friday. It's not until Memorial Day weekend.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ray Lynn, how are we doing on lifeguards?
Lifeguards, we had nine full-time that took the test. We have a assistant manager. We are still looking for subs. Every shift is available. If you could only work one day a week, we will take you. Our rates depending on, depends on how many years' experience you have. We are also looking for a manager. So if you know anyone, we are looking for a manager who can oversee our pools. We do have a strong assistant manager coming in, but we are looking for managers. So if you know of anyone looking to run one of our pools this summer. But we are looking good, definitely for Davidge and Sproutree.
Awesome. All right, any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Clerk?
I just want to reiterate the mayor's comments and Mr. Pew's comments. We had a great spring cleanup this past weekend. Thank you to everybody who helped, Ray Lynn and Parks and Rec and DPW and the police department and all the volunteers were an incredible resource. And thank you to the school district. And it's not even over yet. I know the school district is sending out an additional team this weekend to hit some hotspots that were missed during the initial cleanup because they weren't able to make it. So that's the commitment that we're getting from our students in the community. They weren't able to make the original date, and they're coming back out. So thank you to everybody.
Any question for the clerk? All right, Martha of Alderman, Alderman Witt?
Thank you. Just to echo what Rick had said about the, the cleanup, it was a tremendous effort. Susan, thank you for the motivation and being the inspiration for us on that. Rick, you did a great job as the first-year guy, getting kind of dropped in on that awesome work. And just thank you to all the folks in our, in our district who didn't just come out, they embraced it. And if you looked, it's a great visual when you saw all of those yellow shirts and kids cleaning. So thank you very much.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. Yeah, Sue, you come to our meetings and speak and everything, and it's been wonderful to have you and, and see this event grow every year. It's just an amazing thing that, that happens. Going just by date here, this Thursday through Sunday or until they're sold out at both the North Street Firehouse and Central Firehouse. The Excelsiors and the Ontarios will be having a Mother's Day flower sale. So come down. That's Thursday through Sunday. But they did sell out early last year, so come support the fire companies there and get some nice flowers. We're going to have a constituents' meeting here in the council chambers on Monday, the 9th at 7:00 PM. So we look forward to seeing everyone there, and I won't say much about current national politics other than to say that elections do have consequences, so please vote. Thank you.
Alden McClaner?
Thank you. I, I call Sue the anti-litter lady. And I thank her for the inspiration, and I'm glad we had a great turnout, and it's nice to see that tradition because it's so important to the community. So it's really a sense of community spirit and being proud of your city and going out and helping clean it up. So thank you to everyone involved, and thanks, Rick, on your first time. Did an amazing job, and, and the online sign-up, I think that worked out great. So it was a, it was an instant learning curve, and you did it very well. Thank you. Yes, our second ward constituents' meeting next Monday, second Monday at 7:00 PM, right here. And I also want to thank, you know, it's, it's hard to just ignore what's going on in Ukraine and, and what that's done to our world. But I certainly want to thank Dr. Izraelsky, Middletown's own Dr. Ron Izraelsky. If you saw the article in the record about how much he's doing in helping and getting medical supplies to Ukraine. And he's, he's an amazing man. He was the force behind Turo College. He's been down to Haiti patching people together after the earthquake, and he's, he's what we should all be doing. So I, I thank him. And that's, even though we can talk longer tonight because Mr. Massey's not here. I think we're not in quite a rush to get home, but I, I think that's enough. Thank you.
And the Yankees are on. Alderman Ram Cassoon.
The cleanup was amazing. We've been pretty successful in years past. You know, you never know when you have to take a little break like we did under the circumstances, but the school, amazing community partner, those sports teams, the honor societies, the, you know, church groups, everybody who came, absolutely fantastic. And they were all really excited, and all the kids were really in a great positive frame of mind, and the feedback was that they actually had a lot of fun. And they were also a little surprised at what they tend to not see the rest of the year, but what a great day. Speaking of cleanups, the spring cleanup for this city, yes, the third ward got overly excited, saw somebody put out their bulk, and now there's just a big old mess starting. So for my third ward people and for people who's, it's not your turn, you don't just, we don't just leave trash out for a month in the elements. It's a mess. I'm like, and speaking of mess, please respect the rules of the cleanup. Please do not just throw piles of random trash out on the curb for our crews to pick up. It's a great service that the city offers to our residents, so let's not abuse it and be respectful of the people who are doing this for us because it is a great benefit to us as residents. When it comes to the school, this budget, I mean, what's not to like? We're getting all these amazing improvements, and it's coming at a reduction in our, in our levy. There's nothing to complain about. I don't want to date myself here, but I repeatedly said I will take the Pepsi challenge with this district against any school district in this country. The opportunities that our children have are second to none. I have a child going through her junior year next year who will be taking these Syracuse classes. It's unbelievable, the absolute value and the experience that our children are getting here. So we should keep supporting this administration that manages to put together these numbers and make them work year after year, and I'm glad the state is finally sending us our share, which is a huge relief to us. So, I mean, great schools are great property values, so if you live here, go out, support it, please. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you, sir. Well, you could be litter or anti-litter. I'll just call you indispensable, Sue, so thank you for, for 10 years of making the program grow. You know, I never heard the term zombie poles until a few years ago, but I don't really get out much. So people don't think about it, but there's a lot of them. They're unsightly. They may not actually be safe. It's difficult to get the problem resolved because everybody wants to be not responsible for it. So Jacob, thanks for carrying the torch on that. I do appreciate it. Garbage in the third ward, I echo my fellow Alderwoman, or I guess you'd have to be a man for this to be my alder, but that's okay. We do our best to represent you in the third ward, and now it's time for you guys to represent. So let's put it where it's supposed to be until it's supposed to be out, and we appreciate it. Will Slayer Field, I drive by it four times a day. It actually looks like a field now, so thank you very much for that. The community will appreciate it. And the mayor alluded to the DRI process, I think way back when, many people now think about or remember, it was kind of like a Shark Tank thing to take your 20-minute program and stand in a room and try to stand out among others. And the mayor and his cabinet went forward and did that, and it's been fortuitously self-perpetuating, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Alderman Jean Francois?
Yes. Good evening, all. First, I would like to congratulate the school district on their budget advance. Now it's really up to the community on May 17th to come out and support the school district and help this, to pass this budget. As far as I know, we have our fourth ward constituents' meeting this Saturday in this chamber. I'd like the fourth ward constituents to come out and support us and have a conversation with us, as well inform what's going on in the fourth ward. And we have a good conversation when people come out and tell us what's going on and kind of help us allure it, what's going on in, in the fourth ward, and whatever we could do to help, it's, it's good to hear from the community in the fourth ward. Thank you very much.
Alderman Tobin?
I'd like to echo everybody's remarks. I'd like to thank the superintendent and assistant superintendent for business for putting together a tremendous budget. Like Alderman Ram Cassoon, I have two kids in the district, and I've also used to referee. I've been around the county. We have top-notch facilities and top-notch programs. As a teacher, I'm proud to send my kids here, and, you know, I can't be, it's so much, it seems like it always gets better and better, so thank you very much for looking out for our children. Also, and I hope to support the budget, that's a great investment for the community. I'd like to thank Susan DePue again, thanks for the turnout. It's such a great idea to do that, not only clean the city up, but the pride and the community service that goes along with it. And I'd just like to remind everybody to vote. We have a lot of people running for school board, a lot of interest, interest. It should be a higher turnout, and I encourage them to take a look at the, is there going to be a, like a forum, right? To check out the, two forums, to check out the, the people running and their positions? Because in the society today, we need people, we see our kids, you know, we had QAnon running through the Capitol, people that believe in, you know, conspiracy theories and junk science and flawed science, flawed news. And we need critical thinkers that can think and, you know, and so, you know, it's more important than ever, education. And so I'd like you to support, I mean, take a look at the candidates that are going to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you. New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing a lease extension with the Friends of Thrall Library for the used bookstore.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Green adjusting a timeline for the development of 11-15 King Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Witt, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ram Cassoon authorizing a budget adjustment for the senior center to fund senior trips.
Motion by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing a purchase of WTP chemicals from an alternate vendor.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois to increase the purchase price for JCI Jones Chemicals.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin increasing, authorizing an increase in retainer fees for Freeman and Howard.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing a credit limit increase for the ExxonMobil Gas Card.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green issuing a negative declaration of environmental impact under SECA and the regulations for the zoning change of 44-48 East Avenue from DMU mixed use to R2.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.
Is that it?
That's it.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon, roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.
Is that it?
That's it.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon, roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?